I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 11th. If everyone would rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you would let the record show, we have Ryan Ossimus joining us by phone this evening. Ryan is at his daughter's volleyball game and will be here when that's over. And I want to give a special thank you to Tracy for being here tonight. Yesterday she was in Houston and tomorrow she will be back in Houston. So I appreciate her making the effort to be here tonight.
Wow.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report. Okay.
Second.
Motion by Barbara and a second by Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we've got, one, two, three, four, five, six, six to zero, okay? And I looked over the bills this month and everything seemed to be in order. So I will go ahead and make that motion to approve the bills for September.
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Lisa and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Alright, and we do have a couple special presentations this evening. We've got Gilbert Still and Mackenzie Luters. Gilbert Still Jr. is a 4th grade teacher at Northwest Elementary. He was named Region 1 finalist for the 2018 Kansas Teacher of the Year on Saturday, September 9th in Salina. This award recognizes excellent teaching in the elementary and secondary classrooms of the state. As a finalist, Gilbert receives a $2,000 cash award from Security Benefit, the major corporate partner for Kansas Teacher of the Year. He is also now eligible to be named Kansas Teacher of the Year when it's announced in Wichita on November 18th. We also have Dodge City High School chemistry teacher, Mackenzie Luters. She was named a semifinalist for Region 1 Kansas Teacher of the Year in Secondary Education. There were six semifinalists from Region 1. Each received a red marble apple with a wooden base, compliments of the master teacher in Manhattan. This year, 111 educators across the state were nominated for the Kansas Teacher of the Year distinction. We'd like to congratulate both Gilbert and Mackenzie on this accomplishment.
Madam President, I would like to add, it's a big deal for USD 443 to have both to represent us as semifinalists and to have a finalist. And it was pointed out to me that that's the second year in a row that we've had to qualify for semifinalists, which there was no other district that did that in Region 1. And something we should be proud of for our great teachers.
Absolutely, yes. We are very proud.
Congratulations to both.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Okay, and next up we have our STUCO reports. I've missed those this summer, so I'm happy to have those back. First up, we have Leah Stein from Dodge City High School Student Council.
Good evening. So the first thing I had on my agenda that I wanted to mention to you all was, in August on the 18th, which was the Friday before we began school, we had our back-to-school splash. This was the first year we did that, so that was at the water park downtown. So Student Council funded that and we invited the entire student body to come down. We had some clubs down there, we had tables set up for everyone. So new students could come and kind of get a feel for the high school and talk to some different clubs and activities and see if they'd want to join those. So that was a big success and next year we'll be looking for more sponsors and everything. I think Mr. Hanson and some of the underclassmen are really going to start looking for sponsors for that. Next thing, so Student Council, we have Opportunity Period, which is our second block of the day. And we normally are separate by classes, so freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, we're all separated and together. This year, the Student Council was combined into one. So our representative, Mr. Hanson, asked if we could all be in the same Opportunity Period. And that's really been nice so far this year. So we've been able to have our meetings and instead of having, you know, to plan two weeks ahead prior to a meeting, we are just all in that Opportunity Period. So if we need to talk about, hey, we have a homecoming thing and there's an issue going on, we can just sit down right there and talk about it. So that's really been nice to have that. Speaking of homecoming, that's our next upcoming thing. That's the week, September 18th through the 22nd. Monday, our theme is Siesta Fiesta, which is kind of like pajama day. Tuesday is Twin/Multipllicity Day. Wednesday is Athletes vs. Mathletes. Thursday is Class Color Day and that's also the day we'll have our pep rally. And then our game, the theme for our game, which is Friday, is Red Demon Fiesta. And there's also the parade that day. And then something that we started last year was the Homecoming Scholarship. So instead of it just being like a popularity vote, we, the applicants for homecoming will write essays and then a panel of teachers and students will grade those essays. And then from the pool of essays, candidates are selected. So today, they were announced, we have eight female candidates and eight male candidates. And then from there, the student body selects the homecoming queen and king, which are then crowned at the Homecoming Game on September 23rd. So this year, the first place for queen and king will receive $500. Second place for the queen and king will receive 300 and then third place will receive 200. So that's a little bit different from last year. Last year it was just the king and queen would receive $500. This year, we had a sponsor, so we're able to increase that and get six scholarships now instead of two. So we're really excited about that. And then lastly, we have the Student Council Conference, which is September 27th. That will be at the Civic Center. So we have a committee from the Student Council that's kind of getting that organized and ready. So I'll have more information at the next meeting about how that goes and everything. So are there any questions or anything you guys?
Leah, I understand you won the number one singles at the last tennis.
I did, yeah. Yep, that was a great tournament and I'll play here tomorrow at our next tournament. So hopefully it goes well.
You bet.
Yeah.
Thank you, you did a great job.
Thanks Leah.
Thank you.
Alright, next up we have Efren Martinez from Comanche Middle School.
Good evening, my name is Efren Martinez and I am proud to be president of Comanche Middle School. Let me tell you how I became president. There were three contestants and I was one of them and we had to give speeches. And when it was my turn to give speeches, everyone was like cheering for me. And when I, after I was done giving speech, everyone was like excited for me. Then I won the presidential. And so like, I'm gonna make a chant and like, it's gonna go something like this. When I say go, you say Comanche, ready? Go!
Comanche!
Go!
Comanche!
Go!
Comanche!
There we go, not bad. It's pretty good. Comanche is off to a great start, students are really happy to get, I mean, students are happy to be back in school. It's like if they never left school from summer. Everyone is getting along, students are being respectful to each other and the teachers. We have new rules placed in this year. In lunch serving, we have to be silent, but when we get back to sitting down, we can talk again. We can check out two books from the library, fiction and nonfiction. We got new iPad cases, but we have to be very careful about them. The crosswalk has changed in front of the building. We had to push a button, so wait until the new light changes and before crossing the street. We no longer have to use the crosswalk from 6th grade in front of the 6th grade building. STUCO is raising money for our sister school in Hutcheson. Ms. Tremblay's sister is a teacher in Hutcheson. And students are bringing a spare change for, because we're making a competition to see which grade could fill up the jar. And it's gonna help for Hutcheson for the Hurricane Harvey, my bad. STUCO is also planning for Spirit Week in October. Do you have any questions?
No.
No, thank you.
Good job.
You did a good job Efren.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
I tell you, I didn't get cheered for when I was elected president. Alright, next up we have Anthony Valente from Dodge City Middle School.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Valente and I'm the Student Council President. During the month of September, Student Council will be holding elections for new members. We're happy to say that over 40 students signed up to become members. Elections for new members will be held Friday, September 15th. Also during advisory on September 15th, we will be celebrating Constitution Day as the entire school sings the Star Spangled Banner as our choir leads us over the school intercom. During Celebration Freedom Week, our advisory classes will be doing various activities to learn more about our Constitution. Each year, as part of our tradition at Dodge City Middle School, students will memorize my vision statement. The vision statement stresses the importance of understanding and understanding learning behaviors associated with academic success in life and beyond middle school. Each student who memorizes the vision statement will be awarded a digital badge. The digital badge will be posted on our going-announced digital portfolio. After last year's hard work raising money, the Student Council is proud to be opening a school store. We are in the process of designing a drawstring bag to be the first big product. We're also working closely with the school nurse to provide healthy and tasty smart snacks to the students. DCMS is offering a new elective this year. It is a robotic class. In this class, students use their STEM skills to build and program robots to do simple tasks. The robotics class will also be witnessing a robot demonstration put on by the Dodge City Police Department on Friday, September 15th. Due to the hard work of the staff and Comanche Middle School's generosity, the first day of school turned into a wonderful experience. Every student was provided with eclipse glasses due to Comanche receiving an overshipment of certified eyewear. These eclipse glasses gave each student in our school an opportunity to watch the solar eclipse. National Junior Honor Society is going to have their induction ceremony on the 19th of September for the new 7th grade members. During the month of September, members of our National Junior Honor Society will be signing up for the community service to support the Smithsonian Waterways exhibit. The exhibit will be on display at Boot Hill starting on September 29th and ending on November 11th. Many clubs are getting started again this fall. Honor Choir, Drama Club, and Earbuck Club are a few clubs that are up and running. Also, the 6th graders have started their first round of intramurals. This round of intramurals includes Crochet, Ultimate Frisbee, Dumb Boulders Are On Me, which is a Harry Potter club, Surviving Zombies are in acting. We have also started our Exedo program. Exedo is a 21st century after-school program at DCMS. Any student can join the after-school program. First, students get help getting caught up in their classes. Once that happens, they're merged in STEM programs. Just last week, the students built cars. They have to follow specific directions to accomplish the task in making a working car. By the way, we have found a second useful way to use the board report, by creating a VODCAST that we will upload monthly to the DCMS Zapper app, Zapper News app. You should try it out, it is very cool to use. We can send you the Zapper code if you want to try it out. Any questions?
There's a lot going on.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
And I'm very happy this year because everyone has names that I can pronounce, so thanks for that. Alright, recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the Board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. And the President shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you'd like to address the Board, please approach the podium at this time. Alright, we'll move on. Next up, we have the consent agenda. That includes the approval of personnel, including supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for the August 28th Board of Education luncheon meeting, approval of the Site Council memberships for this year, approval of the donation to Miller Elementary School from Hutton Construction, approval of donation to Dodge City High School FCC LA organization from the Shirley Varan Memorial, also to the DCHS soccer team from First Dental, Michael Dahl and the Dahl Law Firm, and approval of donation to the Student Council Dental One, from Dental One, approval of Kansas Parent Education Program Grant Award for Bright Beginnings and the approval of the Early Learning Kansas Consolidated State Preschool Grant Award for Bright Beginnings.
You did see the email I sent, that it does not include the 11 employees that were included in there. We'll get that straightened out and it was just an error.
Great, yes.
I'd like to approve donations.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
That's nice.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Second. Motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, six, zero. Moving on to new business, we have curriculum and instruction. First off, the junior ROTC application.
Madam President and Board Members, Superintendent Dirksen, we, tonight, we're going to be talking about a potential, exploring the possibility of a junior ROTC program. Hopefully we'll have a PowerPoint up here just a little bit. The reason why we wanted to bring this forward is that we've had several different entities, board members, staff, parents, patrons, and students, that have been asking about a junior ROTC program and the feasibility, whether we could do it, whether we could bring one to Dodge City. The program, junior ROTC, stands for Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps. It is a program that is offered by each of the branches of the military and with an emphasis on citizenship. They do not require any military service. Many people have the false impression that this is an early entry program or commitment to military service. It can help students who have that desire, but on a whole, for instance, for Air Force junior ROTC, there's only 4% of the kids actually go into the Air Force from that program. So it is mainly designed to enhance citizenship, character building, to help them academically. It gives kids another alternative of things that they can participate in. We'll be going over some of these opportunities. There is a deadline of April 1 to apply for a junior ROTC unit. The junior ROTCs do not open immediately. They take, if you're approved for a unit, it would be the following summer, not the immediate summer, but the next summer after. So it's about 15 months from the submission deadline before you would even, would start a unit. That way, you have an opportunity for them to go through the review, make sure that we have all the requirements for a unit, and then also that we, in fact, want to do it. And we have opportunities to go through the hiring pool of the retirees that would be the instructors and pick up those personnel that we think are best for our fit here. And then the program would start July 1 of 2019 if we submitted this coming spring. There are questions related to the opening of a unit that we wanted to discuss. Why are we doing, I've explained that we have been kind of prompted by different individuals to look at this. What type of program should be selected? This is, and then, that is what branch are we going to have service our community? What will the program offer to students and community? What is the level of support from our district, the community, and the students? And that's one of the reasons why we're bringing it forward now, because there's a process that I want to recommend along those lines. And then what requirements do we have to meet a program? Okay? The first thing is, is that we, as I said, they're developing skills, traits, and attitudes that make students better citizens. Okay, go ahead. Develops employability, soft skills. We all know that one of the Kansas emphasis for KISA, the Kansas Education Systems Accreditations, that we need to go through for the, over the next four years, requires that we are addressing soft skills. ROTC develops the character, ed portions, and also the citizenship under the RO standards that need to be addressed. And they help kids to be able to prepare for whatever career they may be going. Many positions that, in the military, directly parallel civilian positions. So job shadowing opportunities and visitation occurs. You may be going to see a person in uniform, but it could be a veterinarian. It could be a food service person. It could be a finance person. All the different fields that you can possibly think of, fire services, military police, reflect the local police. Any type of business you can actually think of, you can relate to a military field for those types of opportunities. Go ahead. Community service is a huge function of junior ROTC. All the branches put a huge priority on community service. And this is where we can give back to our staff, our schools, but also to the actual different entities out in our community. Churches, the elderly, different organizations that we work with, crisis centers and anything that, where we can, anybody has an idea, can be very creative in looking for where they need manpower, planning assistance, etc. This is a great, both volunteer experience and also service learning. The difference between volunteerism and service learning is that volunteerism is the work, service learning is the planning. These positions require the cadets' leadership to actually do the planning for these type of activities. It's wonderful hands-on experience and it meets directly with our standards in Kansas. Go ahead. The, there's once-in-a-lifetime experiences that the cadets will participate in. It can be from flying in jets to going to confidence and obstacle courses, performing color guards at professional events and college events, as well as ones here in our community at our events. Taking part in ceremonies, like 9/11 ceremonies, funerals. The military has cut back a lot of military funerals. Cadets will often be that military presence for those military personnel that do not get to have a military funeral provided by the military. But our cadets can actually be in uniform and do, go through, and they learn and take it very seriously and present it in a very highly professional manner. Aircraft rides, piloted training, different survival trainings. And then also, again, going back to those career experiences, being able to go to different bases around the United States and actually do and work alongside professionals that are doing the jobs. Go ahead. The health education, physical education, district wellness programs are all supported by junior ROTC programs. There is a physical PT requirement, physical training. It is open to everybody. There is no, you can be completely disabled and quadriplegic and you can take part in ROTC. You can be, so wheelchairs are no barrier. There's no, you can be anywhere on the weight scale. You know, believe it or not, even I could be in junior ROTC. It is not like the military where there's a height and weight standard that would eliminate some people. They will customize the uniforms to be able to adapt with any student who wants to participate, whether there's, they have to deal with prosthetics or anything. They make sure it's full participation. But they do want to encourage wellness and healthy activities and long-term goals, not just to pass a PT test. They want, they do, they focus on long-term wellness. Go ahead. Civilian and military professions, we talked about, but there's just a few pictures and examples. Even like doing presentations and briefing, similar to what I'm doing right now. They, there's a lot of opportunities where the cadet leadership has to do presentations. It's a huge business skill. So, you know, besides our debate and our, a few of our business classes that participate and speech classes, this is another whole opportunity for them to practice being in front of people, communicating, delivering ideas. Go ahead. The character education, of course, is what most of the districts want to see from ROTC units. The, when ROTC units, they're, of course, when they get started, they have to develop their program with kids. But they show huge statistical positive impacts on the schools that they participate in. Suspension rates go down, dropout rates go down, academics go up. Your, again, your service to the community, volunteerism goes up. It's another place for a lot of kids who would not participate in other areas to participate and find a place. It is, it is very appealing to special education students. It gives them a place where they can excel. The, the nice thing about, if you look at some of these, on the dress uniforms, you see the medals worn. That is a constant intrinsic development that comes in from promoting their performance. When a kid in a track or football wins an award, that, the trophy or the medal goes into their room. It's put on a shelf, it's hung on their bedpost or something like that. And again, no one ever sees it again. When these kids walk around with their achievements on their chest, we call it the salad on their chest, when they get to show that off, there's constantly adults always asking, what'd you earn for that? What is that for? What did you do to get that? And they, it brings a lot of pride because they get to share what they achieved. And it's a constant reinforcement of what they have achieved versus it just being in a room that no one ever talks about again. So it, that is a system that actually develops their pride and also reinforces the good things they've done. Go ahead. These are some of the statistics that I talked about. You can see up there, graduation across the nation, graduation rates increased from 86% to 98% in the schools with them. Discipline referrals fall on average of 10%. Dropout rates decreased from 3% to less than 1%. Attendance rates increased on average of 3.42%. GPAs rise from a quarter point to a half point on a 4.0 scale. That means usually from like about a 2.68 to a 2.9 as a national average. So there's the statistical positive average that has been collected over several decades of junior ROTC programs. Go ahead. They do provide electives, the Board, if the junior ROTC program is provided, you would vote to give it credit. You can choose to give it ROTC credit as an elective. You can also work, some schools give PE credit for the physical activity if they put in certain requirements and it meets the Board's standards for that. But at least wise, they do it as a elective credit for each of the cadets as they pursue their, towards their graduation total. Go ahead. Some of the possible credits that have been given to junior ROTC units are there that I spoke about a little bit. Some of those will vary by the type of unit that you pick. Junior ROTC with the Air Force program has a very science, technology, engineering, arts, and math basis. And so a lot of these tech skills you will see are related to their curriculum. Go ahead. They, they offer scholarship opportunities. Of course, any scholarship opportunity is going to be enhanced, whether you're going for a sports scholarship, tennis at KU that we just were talking about, to any type of scholarship. If you have awards and recognitions that you can put on those scholarships and leadership opportunities that you can put on a scholarship, and showing that you're doing more away from just the academics, but you can handle the stress of doing many different activities while keeping your grades up. All of those help any application that you put in across any academic field that you want to go for a scholarship in. Also, ROTC offers three levels of scholarships. Top-level scholarship is good at any state school that has any type of ROTC program and it pays everything. All tuition, fees, books, every type of fee, room and board, etc. And they can go to any school they want, they could go to four different schools and rotate every year if they wanted. The second one, although the ROTC units really don't like that, but a kid can certainly take advantage if they wanted to. The second level would be any state school within a certain state. And they're allowed to choose, like in Kansas, they could, if they were awarded one from here, they could choose any school in Kansas. And they could, if it be any four-year college that has an ROTC unit, they could go to. Again, everything's paid for them. They also get a cash allowance every month. And I think right now it's at $500 a month that they get on a, both of those scholarships. And that's just to help their incidentals with, so they don't have to work, they can concentrate on grades. The last level is each- The last level is each school can provide, each college that has an RTC unit can give a specific scholarship to their school and to their unit. So if K-State wanted to appoint one of our cadets with a scholarship, that scholarship would be good just for K-State, but they could go there and they get everything paid. And within those levels, it can be everything from room and board and tuition and books, or they, they can even go down as, to get secondary qualifiers where they pay just the tuition and books instead of room and board, but they get more people, at least some scholarship help that way. If you're an honor unit, if you achieve after so many years of being an RTC unit and you continue to exhibit excellence and you're rated, the commanders get to get a scholarship that they get to pick, they can award to any cadet within their unit. It is not, it is not a competitive, it's not GPA-based. They can go and pick any student that they feel that they want to send to college because they've been an outstanding cadet in their unit. So it may be a C student that has tremendous work ethic and tremendous leadership ability, they're just not acad, they're never going to compete because they don't get the high ACT or they don't have the honors classes to compete for the national scholarships. But that, if they do well, that commander can say, guess what? You get to go to a four-year college, here is your scholarship. And they would pick that school in the state, they go to it and they get a full ride scholarship that way. That's another goal of the unit is to be able to obtain that scholarship level so they can reward the kids in our program. Okay, go ahead. Summer camps are offered every summer. The instructors basically operate like administrators or a combination of administrators/head coaches for four sports a year, if you can imagine, because they are doing after-school curricular activities throughout the fall, winter, spring and the summer. They also take the kids to summer camps. Military bases all across the nation perform different summer camps. Cadets can go to these summer camps. They're not little boot camps. They are experiences that deal with academics and job qualifications. You can go and learn how to be a pilot, you can become, go to a weather school, you can go to a police academy, you can go, just, you know, you could work in parallel for a whole summer in a, in a finance department, or you might be interested in HVAC work and so you go and, you might go to that camp with those type of people that are interested in those type of vocations. So they vary and they're, and they change from year to year, but they're offered everywhere. There are base camps that are called leadership camps. Colorado Springs is one, and for the Air Force, we could send them right over. They stay in the, on the base in the summer in the same quarters that the Air Force cadets use. They go to PT in the fabulous facility that the cadets use at the Air Force Academy for their athletic training and their sports, weightlifting and all that kind of stuff. And they go through and you kind of see on the right, there's, they would be doing things like making sure they know how to make their bed. It really makes moms proud when their kids come home and they can make their beds that way. But they teach a lot, that's where those camps, leadership, having opportunities to lead others, problem solving, and then they also do require the character and discipline part, showing self-discipline, showing the ability to rise to standards that are, high expectations that are given to you. Go ahead. You see here just some more of the activities at summer camps that are done. Even like Hutchinson's Space Camp, you know, on the bottom right, that is one of the programs that junior RTC send people to, including the waitless training down in Florida where they go underwater and they wear the space suits and they do the astronaut waitless training. And so they even go to the advanced space camp versus just the one in Hutchinson. But they have all different types of activities, almost anything you can imagine, they get an opportunity to do at some point. Go ahead. Extracurricular activities. RTC will do rocketry, robotics, they will do remote drone-type work, they do color guards. Color guards are high in demand. They go all over your communities to do these functions, not just at ballgames, but they, they get called into hotels for different functions, they get, you know, the arenas, cemeteries, just, and they're very, very high demand. It's a high visibility and your sharpest cadets are who you want to put out there because they, the people want you to be very serious, very professional and show that excellence. And of course, you want, we want to honor all that. Flag details are done at all the events too. They'll also march in parades. So when we do have Dodge City Days, there'll be units that'll march and the cadets will come down and march and be part of those, those type of functions. And they'll go to different communities around our area to do the same thing. Top right, you see all these different dances, proms, that type of thing. They have military ball. They, they, they teach the kids the structure of a military ball, the customs and courtesies that are associated with it. They will do what's called a dining in, which is a, or dining out, depending if they let outside people in or if it's just going to be the cadets. Those people planning that, make that decision, but it is a very formal affair. They teach them how to use utensils properly, how to eat, how to be in a very formal atmosphere and behave properly and with complete, polite etiquette. So they teach etiquette. Many of our kids do not get exposed at that level. If they were going for interviews and jobs at different places and they have to go eat with the prospective boss or something, they don't know how to respond to that type environment. This is an excellent training area. Go ahead. What type program do we want to consider? Again, that's what type of branch that we want to look at. The United States Marine Corps has frozen all new programs. They are not an option for us at the time. Budget cuts that have been passed from Congress to the military and the shift to focus on the combat elements of the military has reduced the funding to RTC units. The Marine Corps has frozen, they will not open any new units for an undetermined amount of time. So that is not going to be an option. Navy RTC, the closest support facility that we have is in Kansas City. That's a long way for us to travel to get support from a base and to be able to buy supplies, that kind of thing. So that was a little bit of a drawback for us. And then the Army and the Air Force were our two main considerations. And the, the Army, you would have support from Fort Riley, you'd have support from Fort Sill. The only problem with those two locations is we are outside of their allowable travel for their personnel to come to us in one day. So any of their personnel that come to us, we have to provide overnight per diem and tra, you know, hotel and that kind of thing for them to come to us. We tried to get them to come down at some other events for us and that, that was the thing that kind of limited us from being able to get them to be involved with us. The Air Force Junior RTC is within that range because of McConnell Air Force Base. Those personnel can come to us if we wanted them here to support our person, our cadet program. They can make the trip and get back within the government limits for daily travel. They also have, in addition to McConnell Air Force Base in Wichita, there's Forbes Field in Topeka, there's Colorado Springs and the Academy in Colorado Springs, Kirkland Air Force Base in New Mexico, which is also, one of the commanders there is one of our patrons' daughters is a Colonel. And they, so that would be a contact. She is now in command of the Special Forces, Special Operations Squadron there. We also have Tinker Air Force, Air Force Base out near Oklahoma. And that, in addition to an Air Force Base, there's also a government informational technology security training. That can provide some opportunities for kids to look and explore another career there. We are recommending junior RTC from the Air Force because of the support of the different facilities around us, the closeness of McConnell. We have sister units in Lyons, Kansas, Derby, Kansas and Wichita, Kansas that we can interact with and mentor off of immediately. We also, we, there's some political and sensitive issues that the Air Force has some advantages on. It is very focused on STEM curriculum versus just a straight generic leadership curriculum. So there's, there's some academic expectations and delivery that matches some of our standards and things that we're looking for. It also, many people, especially now, due to the war on terrorism and the different things that are happening and some of the fears, when they see their kids in combat fatigues and, and the Army has more toys to play with, I call it, they, they get to go to bases and they get to do rifle marksmanship and they get different types of, playing with different weapons and they get to experience simulators that are more combat oriented. A lot of parents don't like that their kids are kind of being exposed and indoctrinated towards combat. And so there's a little bit of resistance when you go to the community to talk about a junior RTC program, even though you reiterate over and over again, there's no commitment to the military. They are afraid, many parents are afraid that their kids are just going to end up going straight into combat. The Air Force Junior RTC uses, there are different approach on the uniforms. You saw a lot of these pictures with dress blue, they wear more of a business-type environment. The milit, even if kids wanted to go in the military, if they could choose the Air Force, 90% of the job forces are in the United States, they don't get sent and deployed over into combat environments. So there, it's a more acceptable program with less resistance because it is academic-based, citizenship-based, has less of that possible perception that it's designed to get kids into combat. So it has a little bit more of an acceptable edge than the other branches. And that's one of the reasons we also wanted to, to recommend the Air Force. Go ahead. Those are the actual mission statements, you could see a little bit in the difference. Again, it's not to train people to be in the military. They're all talking about citizenship, character ed, you know, the focusing on making them better members of their community, better members of our nation. It is not about training people to hold a rifle and go to war. That is not the mission of junior RTC programs. Go ahead. These are the junior RTC outcomes that you can expect. Personal accountability, integrity, engage in civic and social concerns, graduate prepared to excel in post-secondary options and career pathways. Again, that fits with us trying to develop more career pathways. Make decisions that promote positive social, emotional and physical health. And then they want them to value the role of the military and other service organizations. That's the investment by the military. They would like to have people develop a goodwill to understand what the cert, why we have a military, why does the military serve our country? What is the purpose of it? And so that's one of the pieces that they do give. Go ahead. Air Force Junior RTC outcomes more specifically are there. You still see it's about citizenship is number one. Entering the workforce in a highly technical world and civilian industry, that's one of the main advantages, why we were emphasizing the Air Force curriculum. Instruct cadets in aerospace science studies that include aviation history, science and flight, that's the curriculum that you will see. Instruct leadership education, wellness, communications, life skills, career opportunities, principles of management. Then health and wellness, community service, and then, again, all of them emphasize a drug abuse prevention education program. Okay, go ahead. That's the Navy. And just I'll let you scan through that. My recommendation is really for the Air Force, but I'll let you look at the comparison. Okay. What does it provide to our community and to our students? Graduates with more employability skills, greater number of students involved in activity, community organizations can access the color guards and all the things we spoke there, cadets, positive role models for younger. One of the things that junior RTC units do is they will go down and they hold junior cadet programs, they go down into the elementaries, they go down into the middle schools, and they'll practice some of the leadership things that they do, some of the exercise they plan. They may help teachers to run a fair, they may come down and help teachers put on different types like field days and things like that. So there's a lot of activities that they'll interact with that way. Students of poverty and minorities benefit most statistically. Air Force Junior RTC is 58% minority and 38% female and increasing. Many units are majority female. Many people don't realize that. It promotes healthy and wise decision-making. Cadets enlist at a higher rank. If they choose to go in the military, they will get between how long they were in, one to two ranks higher when they enlist in the military. That means they can get up to like two years advanced on being able to get promoted, be able to gain, gain access to base housing, those type of things that make their life better, being able to get married and have families and be able to access the base housing and benefits that occur. That's all, comes about two years more rapidly than people who are not in junior RTC enlisting the military. They, they support other school organizations. The junior RTC really tries to put itself at a default position that if they're in competition at any time with another organization, they try to withdraw back and not make a negative impact on that other organization. So they, they really, if it means like their cadets need to be in two places at once, junior RTC will always yield to the other organization within the school. So if the football team's taking someone and our kids, the cadets need, were supposed to be at another place at the same time, they will tell those cadets, you don't have an option to skip your football. You will go to your football, your RTC is second. And so that, that is a, they do not ever want to be a negative impact on another organization. Again, they, they provide a lot of positive community press. You'll have a lot of good Facebook, a lot of good articles in the Globe, television, press releases, et cetera, a lot of good film opportunities. It does bring cash flow into the community. The Air Force will send, on average, about $100,000 a year for cadets to use in different types of programs in the community, buying different supplies and things like that. So there is money that comes in from the federal government to assist and, and we try to channel that into the local economy as best and, and as much as possible. Parents and families will get very involved with these units. They develop a booster club for the RTC units so that they can be involved. And many times, they, families can accompany some of their cadets on some of these field trips and trips that they do, including being able to ride military transportation at times. It just kind of varies from what that event's going to be and what the availability of aircraft and that, those type. But I'll give you an example. My father ran the largest Air Force Junior RTC program in the world. They lay loaded up early in the morning in Belchase Air, Air Base in, outside of New Orleans. They got on the plane, flew to Wright-Patt Air Force Base in Ohio. They toured the Air Force Air Museum, which is the largest air museum in the world, toured it. At the end of the day, they got back on military aircraft, flew back to Louisiana, got off the planes and went back home, all provided by the military, no cost. Kids got, that's, that's kind of a little bit of an edge over a yellow bus going on a field trip, so it was kind of cool. The families were able to participate at times with those type of aircraft flights depending on the availability and how many aircraft they have, et cetera. And of course, the travel opportunities, kids are going to be able to see parts of the world that they, the United States that they don't normally get to see. They can be sent to these different camps, et cetera. Go ahead. The level of support from the program. We'd like to be able to present to all these different organizations within our community and within our school system to make sure that they understand the purpose and where we're going and what we're trying to do and alleviate some of the fears that sometimes are associated. But these are some of the things that we'd like to do. And we need, if we're going to do this, we'd need to do it very quickly over the next couple of months. Go ahead. These are the requirements that you need to look at, that you'll be committing. You have to have at least 100 cadets participating in the program. Our size high school, we can count on probably between 125 minimum, up to about 200 to start. It will be in, if you grow, you know, if you get 855, you're doing outstanding. But when you look at some of the 2,000 student high schools, they sit between about 150 and 200. The minimum is 100. The, you have to be able to allocate office space for the two instructors. One of the reasons why Jackie is trying to get a feeling of where, if we're going to do this is because she has to make plans on the space and reserving space after the building, the construction's finished to know. We're looking at existing space right now, not taking new space of where the classrooms, the storage space and the offices would be located. But that means she'd have to hold those spaces, not fill them in when the unit, so they're available when the unit starts and not overbooked, so to say, so that there's no place for that unit to be if we choose to go there and we are awarded one. There's no guarantee that just because we apply, we will be awarded. There's no guarantee that just because we apply, we will be awarded. Air Force Junior RTC is underrepresented in the state of Kansas. That means there are less units than are authorized for the state of Kansas. That is one of the other reasons that we wanted to prioritize junior RTC, because they are hungry for a unit. In our size school and where it's located, there's nothing else around. So they were hoping that we could represent that. I have been in touch with Maxwell Air Force Base, which is where Air Force Headquarters is. Some of the personnel there, involved in it, we've been in communication, talking about it. And they have initiated conversation. Are you guys still thinking about opening? I said, we are in infancy. We do not know what the board's going to vote, but we are getting ready to explore. And they say, well, keep us informed. So they are hungry and they are looking, even though with the budget cuts, they are underrepresented and wanting something here. We have to be able to give the same office supplies and materials that we give any other teacher. And we have to provide a secured location. If we have windows, they have to be barred. Locations that we're looking at are interior locations, so that would not apply. But they have to be lockable and safe to keep Air Force equipment in, because they're going to put a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of uniforms and materials and equipment into those storage rooms. There's no cost to the kids for these supplies and materials from the Air Force also. We will provide some school activities and things like when we're doing local community service things, stuff like that. The Air Force doesn't pay for those types of transportation, so we'd have to be able to take part of them, just like any other school event. But the Air Force provides all transportation to the larger, to the camps, to the summer camps, to the national trips. And they do provide some activity money out of that hundred thousand dollars a year. And as your unit grows, you get more money, and that allows you to do more things with your kids. Substitute teachers, so we can, you know, if they, if they're sick or something like that, we supply substitutes. So if any of you are interested in being, having a sub-license and want to be a RTC teacher when they're absent, that would be a great place to be. And then permit instructors to train their required training with the Air Force, but also to do our professional development that we do here. They participate right like any other staff members. They go to wherever we tell them to go and do those types of things. We anticipate two classrooms, the storage space, and two offices as the space. They need to have outdoor access for drill outside, and they also need to have access to an indoor drill area, which the expansion would also provide that, or any of the gyms in the district can be used for that. So we would be in good shape, meeting their standards. The area that, preliminary area that Jackie has looked at is ideal for it, and I think that we would score very highly on each of our different areas. If we can get some of the community, school approvals and show support for the program, that all is a way of beefing up our application and showing that support. If we talk about preliminary, setting up a booster club early, that's something else you can put into the application, state how we have community support and patron support and parent support. It is a highly competitive process, but if we are awarded a unit, we would know sometime early next fall if we were to get a unit. We would have the right at that time to make a decision on whether we want to accept the offer, or we could say, you know, we changed our mind, we don't want to do this. So even though we apply in April, if you choose to go for an application, you're not committing to anything until the award comes, if it comes, and it would be next fall, that you would have to make your formal decision to commit whether you want the unit or not. So that's the timeline of where we'd be looking at. We'd really like to be able to get an application in for March first, because then if there's any technical little thing that we may have messed up or something like that, they have an opportunity to say, hey, we also need this, or hey, can you do something, change this a little bit and send this back to us, instead of waiting and being right at the deadline and not having an opportunity to do any edits. We are asking tonight for your approval to start the process of going towards an application to be submitted, or hoping by March one, but no later than April one. And that we'd like to be able to start reaching out to some of these other organizations within our, the high school, the district, and also in our community, to make them aware that we are moving towards this application. And we also want to say that it would be a junior, Air Force Junior RTC application. Any questions?
How do you go about gauging student interest?
Student interest, one thing, we're going to have to work with Jackie on how to reach out to those different, and kind of go through a presentation. There's a student presentation that I will give. It'll be a little different than this, but it'll talk more about what they would be interested in. And then we'll have to do some surveys to see how many of you would like to be part of this unit. Yes?
Who does the application?
The application? The actual filling out of the forms I will probably do. I've started, this will be my fifth unit I've started, so I will work with Dr. Dirksen and y'all to make sure that we get the application prepared and sent in. The application, you look at the form, is not really anything real hard, but it's also been able to support some of the, you know, putting in other things that can really help us to make us stand out in comparison to the other generic applications. But we'll send that in, and then we'll see where it comes from. But I believe that we have a very, very strong opportunity here to have a unit.
What parts of the week or day is it active?
It's active every day like a regular class. Jackie will build into a schedule, just like any other elective. The courses, they will be four levels. When you first start, everybody's level one, because nobody's been in it before. After four years, you will have four levels of cadets. Each time a kid moves up in the levels, at first, they're all temporary, basically commanders. You know, you're going to have to go out and pick, kind of like voting for StuCo. And they're going to select some of the, between the officers and the cadets that are present, they'll start selecting some people to become the cadet commander, who's going to be the operations commander, who's going to be the supply commander, who's going, and they start assigning these jobs. Each year, actually each semester, they will reassign some of these positions, keep them moving. And the senior class, after four years, that's your top leadership. And your freshmen are usually your entry level, and you have officers, who are your juniors and seniors, and you have enlisted, just parallel the military, in your freshman sophomore years. And so they actually have a rank structure. They learn to fight, to respect rank, even if you don't respect the person. Because they may look at a person, I don't like that person, but that person outranks me, and I need to learn how to follow directions even from somebody that I don't like personally. That's part of how to work in a job environment, how to work in the real world. So that's part of that training they receive. And the managers have to learn how to treat their people with respect and how to work and motivate people that may not like them personally. How do you successfully complete the mission? So that's that structure that they put into play.
These students are still going to school?
Absolutely.
So how do you divide up the part of the day that they're in classes and the part of the day that they're in cadet training?
Cadet training all occurs each day within a regular block period that Jackie will assign. So if I'm a cadet, I go to math first block, second period, she may have it set up, or I go second block is my RTC time. Then I go to third block to language arts, fourth block to another class, you know, science, social studies, whatever my schedule is. It's just part of my regular daily schedule that would occur during the week. It's no different than if they took music or took debate or if they, any other elective that they might possibly take. It's treated exactly like an elective. A lot of these things take place after hours. And that is based on when the kids can make it. Some kids will want to do color guard, but they're in three sports. Well, they can't do color guard while they're in sports, because they have practices and games. But when they're in dead times, they can still practice and train when they have available time, so that when they're free, they can go participate on those functions. They do a lot of around the kids' schedules. Again, they do not want to negatively impact anything. But a lot of the activities are after school, summertimes, weekends, and then, but during the school day, it is just like any other elective.
Any questions?
I guess I have one more.
Sure.
What are the qualifications of the required teachers?
The teachers will be two, excellent question. Teachers will be, you have to have a minimum of two personnel. They prefer one officer and one enlisted. That is so enlisted, in the Air Force, almost all of them will have four-year college degrees. They are retired personnel that retired from the military. That means they will have twenty-plus years in the Air Force. They'll be somewhere between twenty and thirty-two years that they served in the military successfully. They have been applied and selected into a pool of candidates. That pool of candidates is then advertised in, and we, they would say, hey, these people are interested in applying for jobs in Dodge City, Kansas. We take a look at the pool, we select who we want to interview, all or none, or one or two, whatever we feel that we want to interview. They come out here, the military will pay for them to come to us. They visit onsite, we talk to them, we interview them, similar to the way you would interview any other assistant principal and coach. Because you're really looking for that kind of an individual, because it's year-round, and you don't want someone that's just retiring from the military that's going to sit out and try to golf every day. They're here for kids year-round. It's high demand, it's high energy, and you have to have that type of individual. If we don't see anyone that we feel is going to fit that role and fit that knee, we're nervous that they may just, you know, eh, they're looking for a retirement job, they're not looking to work with kids at this level. We can pass on every single person that they send us and keep asking for more. And they will just keep recruiting, they'll keep looking and keep sending until we find the individuals we want. If you can't find two officers, they, or two, they will let you go with two officers or two enlisted people instead of one each, if there's a shortage and you're having, but you find two people you really like, they will write a waiver and let you do that.
Are they full-time positions?
They're full-time positions, yes. Yes, ma'am.
I was in RTC in high school. It was a great experience. I thoroughly enjoyed it. The only downside was it was right smack dab in the middle of Vietnam.
Yeah.
The military wasn't very popular.
Right.
Especially in high school.
And, you know, that's why we're trying to go with the Air Force, to try to appeal to that, make sure they understand the citizenship. We're not trying to prepare kids for war. We're really talking about the R O standards, the soft skills, employability skills, and with the STEM activity, the STEM academics.
Make a recommendation that we approve the commitments of the application process.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy and a second by Tammy. One in favor? Six-zero. Deb, Ryan had to leave the meeting at six fifty-three.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate your time.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you're still up, Glenn. Biography-driven and culturally responsive instruction pilot from the middle school?
Right. We have, Dr. Vinton has brought to us a wonderful opportunity that we're working with at Dodge City Middle School. And the principal there has worked with his staff, presented it to them, and they, it was a pretty short turnaround from when Dr. Herrera from K-State had brought the information to Dr. Vinton. And the, in that tight turnaround, we had to develop, make sure we weren't doing unto our teachers, we wanted their buy-in. So Mike worked with them, Dr. Vinton arranged for initial training to give an overview. The staff worked through with that. It's about twenty-seven staff members consisting of teachers in pairs that will be working, and it is core subjects as well as newcomer programs that are doing this pilot. The pilot specifically is biographical-driven, culturally-responsive instruction. It is not a new program, it's not something that we're adding on. What the research is, is it goes in and says, you're teaching math, you're teaching language arts, you're teaching science, you're teaching social studies. How can you best engage students who are English-language learners on, to get them to interact more fully and be more successful through your instruction in those subject areas? It doesn't try to teach something, a new curriculum. It's about teaching whatever curriculum that we're using and how to be more effective in it. It's tying to their, the student's culture, to the student's background in each of those areas. It's pretty simple for us to think, okay, I'm teaching a writing lesson, instead of me just generically saying, I want you to write an article on the Constitution or something like it. Our kids, a lot of our English learners have no concept of what our Constitution is. But if I turned around and I said, okay, I need you to write a paper, but I want you to start talking about writing it from your perspective, what's your experience, and I choose a topic that they have some relative knowledge about, they have cultural values about, that they can write. Because the goal is, we're trying to teach them to write. So in that writing class, we pick some things that tie to them. Social studies, we may be giving them, teaching them about the Constitution. But then we have to say, okay, if they have no abstract knowledge of what a Constitution means, how can I tie it to their backgrounds to give them examples so the Constitution has meanings, that the Bill of Rights has a meaning to them? And it's reaching out to their backgrounds, their culture, to get them to want to talk more, to write more, and to participate more fully in the curriculum that we're trying to present. The research, what I've been looking at, I tried, when it was first brought to us, I started looking at, a lot of the research developed around 2013, 2012 is when I really started seeing a lot of literature on it. There was two doctors that, on a nationwide scale, that names kept coming up over and over again, that different colleges and different school districts, major school districts like Los Angeles, Austin, San Antonio, Philadelphia, New York were using. And it goes back. And Dr. Herrera is one of the top two national-level-recognized experts in this instructional program. So we're very fortunate to have her as a resource. She is coming in and doing training with our people. She's doing, going to do walkthroughs and watch the teachers using these techniques. She will give constructive feedback to our teachers on how they're doing with it, and it will kind of progress through training, walkthroughs, feedback, and try to keep developing our teachers. We will keep monitoring the impact that it's making on the classroom. If we feel like it's doing what we need to do and it's moving forward, we will continue it, and we'll try to expand it to where it reaches more subjects, more staff member, both at the middle school, but also other, the other middle school, the high school, et cetera. We're going to try to keep expanding that. It is a phased billing system, because I was talking to Dr. Vinton, and I was afraid of buying off one great big chunk of training and putting it into play and not knowing if it's really going to be successful or not. Is it something our teachers are really going to buy into? Are they really going to put it into play? So we're doing it in phases, and each time they come out, so we're buying like this segment, see how it works, see how it implements, do an assessment on it, do the next segment. So when you look at the cost of it, it can total out somewhere in the forty-one thousand area. We're waiting to see how this impact goes. Instead of just saying, we want approval for forty-one thousand all upfront, we just wanted to say, let us do this in segments and see that it would be appropriate for us and that we're seeing success with it, and we will continue. Or we say, you know, it's, we're just not hitting at this, and it's maybe the wrong time, it may not be, it may be the right stuff, but it's the wrong time due to the stress that we're under or different changes, whether it's construction or whatever. We may have to revisit. Maybe we need to reorganize, maybe we need to take a look at how we're doing the training. But we didn't want to put the whole investment, just cart-bosh up front. We wanted to do it in small phases and work. Dr. Herrera was very nice. She said, I will be happy to do that with you. She's set up a schedule on what she wants to do. And so we are doing this phase in of the program. So that is, yes?
Is there any chance that we'll get an opportunity to see maybe a film or some feedback about how it's going and what it's taking?
I guarantee you that, since you brought that up, that he will absolutely do that for you. Right. Yeah, see, they both said yes. See, it's amazing how that works.
What about observers? Would they, would they be detrimental or would they be okay for the process, maybe at some point?
If the board members came in to watch? I think you're welcome, just like any other classroom. It's not something that's going to be high pressure on them, it's to be integrated in the normal instructional practices. So I don't think you're going to intimidate our teachers at all. But we, and we have technology available to us that we can definitely present some options for you and see it in action. You're always invited in the schools to watch the instruction going on.
Great.
And you can come and attend the trainings, too. You're welcome to come in. I'll give you the full schedule, and we can train you.
All right. Thanks, Glenn. You're still up?
I know, I got one more.
The suspension handbook.
The suspension handbook, if you look at your notes, we're going to delete two forms that were from, outdated forms from Project Avert. We don't use those forms any longer, so we deleted those. There's no substantial process differences in the handbook. The only things that you'll see is a few minor edits, but then we've allowed a little bit more flexibility on Level Two. If you look at the graph of the matrix, some of the suspensions have been changed, where long-term suspension only occurred in the third offense. Now we've moved it where it is possible that it could occur on the second offense, so the suspension- the suspension now says either three or five days up to long-term suspension. That is to allow for those more severe cases where a student may, in those particular infractions that are listed, if it was deemed to be very serious, and it's a fight, and the person won't back off, won't stop, won't follow directions, just is very, very aggressive, and that we weren't going to just do a shorter-term suspension with them, that could result in a long-term suspension. It gives a little bit more flexibility to the principals to design the consequence to be appropriate to the level of the infraction that occurred at the school. So those are the only edits that you will see. The process, there's no change in process, all the other processes remain. Any other questions?
This will come back for us to approve at the next meeting.
Yes, this is first reading, and we'll do the next reading at the next board meet the end of the month, and that's when you'll vote to make it.
Very good, thank you. And finally, the approval of the career counselor position at the high school.
Yes, if you remember early, last, before Dr. Durson came on, we had a conversation about grant that was being put in, and it was a career counseling position. And in that career counseling position, K-State was trying to put in where they would pay for half of that career counselor. They applied, they did not get the grant this year, they are reapplying for next year. However, as we had talked, we really, the board had incurred with administration that this was an important position. Jackie had talked and presented a little bit about this was going to be a planning semester that we were going to start, and to get all the mechanisms in place. This position is primarily dealing with the setting up of the shadow programs, the internships, making the relationship, finding and connecting to businesses that are going to help us do those functions, working with data studies, and collecting the data of those different programs. It is completely around the pathways and the actual job experiences that we're working with, is what this position. We feel that this is a highly valuable position, especially where the high school's trying to go, as a pathway-type high school. This is putting us on the cutting edge to, that we might be the second or third high school to be moving in this direction nationwide. We feel like this is an essential position. It may be a full, regular counselor with a counseling degree, it could also be a classified person that shows and demonstrates those high level of skills that we need in those areas. We will have to just see who that force pool is when we apply, and look at who we're doing. There is a cost increase, we are not, the grant would have started a little earlier than where we're starting, so there's, we're balancing out a little bit of money. The first year is about seven thousand dollars, I think, difference in the costs that presented to you. I didn't bring up my paper in front of me, but the second year, we want this to be a permanent position, and so we want to engage this. We hope that next year will be offset, and maybe for a few years, whatever the life of the grant is, that K-State will be awarded, and they will be able to give us fifty percent of that salary back. But there's not a guarantee, they may not get it next year. We still want to be committed to putting this position in play. We really feel that this is going to be essential for our kids. It is all about everything that we're trying to achieve with pathways, trying to do the work experiences, preparing kids for career, college and career readiness. It is exactly right down the lines of the vision of the state of Kansas, on where they want our graduates to be. And we're really hoping that you agree with us, and will allow us to, that you will approve this position, allow us to post it and hire a highly qualified individual that will make a huge impact, a positive impact on our kids in this area.
And you're looking for this position to begin in January?
Yes.
One thing I would say, it needs to be the right person to get really ingrained in the business community in Dodge City, I mean, not, I mean...
Absolutely.
They can't wall themselves up in a office at the high school.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is not a person that's going to sit on a computer as a registrar, sitting back and sending out emails, this is someone that's going to have to be very interactive with community, definitely.
We can, there's community resources that will just jump in and immediately help.
Right.
I would make a motion that we run the career counselor position at the high school.
Second. I have a motion by Jeff, and a second by Barbara, all in favor? Six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, next up, we have Business Services, Bill.
I'm Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, or should I say Doctor Superintendent, I just realized something wrong on that, I apologize. This evening, there are several things before you, and I guess the first one, I'm going to have to do a little self-confession on it. Most of the time, the decisions that we make, we feel pretty good about. There's one decision that I have not felt good about since I made it. The direction of the board was very candidly, bring this project in, get everything we promised to the voters, make sure all that gets done, and keep it in budget. And I think we've done that. But there's one thing that we kind of took out that I don't think we should have, and we're hopefully going to put it back in tonight, and that is basically the crossover at North, or at Central Elementary. We did pass out a little earlier to the board, a passout, and for you who have not been at Central Elementary, it's basically being built in a U shape. And what we're wanting to do this evening is get the design fees up front, so that we can go ahead and put this back in the project at Central Elementary. This will give a shorter walk for kindergarteners and others in the new addition into the class, into the area that's going to have both the music rooms, the gymnasium, and the cafeteria, and the gym. We think that will reduce the amount of interference with other students, we think it will shorten passing time. It will also, if you look at page two of that, and I'm kind of going through this because I know we're running just a little bit long tonight, we will have basically two outdoor classrooms developed by this passing area that will be enclosed, and we think for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, the life of that school, it's going to be a good investment. So that's what I'm trying to accomplish this evening. Again, we basically, it was in the original program, we took it out because of budget concerns early on. We had some early projects, I don't know, you probably don't remember that now, but come in high because of steel prices took us by, it kind of scared us, but we do have their funds at this point, and we think we can make this happen, and that's why I'm asking for this approval this evening.
And so the cost of this bill is the twenty-six thousand five hundred?
That is for the design. The actual crossover, which I'm going to sit back, and I'm going to, almost you're going to sit down, it is an expensive thing, because it's a very few square feet, and it's going to be probably around two-hundred thousand dollars when it's all said and done. I'm not going to sit here and give you anything else, it's, there is underground water that has to be taken care of, there is basically HVAC that has to be taken care of, there is a construction cost that has to be taken care of, and it's just, it's not a lot of square feet each, and when you get to smaller square feet, it is an expensive cost for use. So that's, but this time is basically for the design fee of this. Most of that, I may add, is basically engineering. When you do the engineering, whether you're doing a small space or a large space, it seems like the number of details are similar, and we've had multiple conversations about that. So it does give pause, I completely understand that. I'm going to be blunt, I think when it's done, it's something we should do as a district, and again, I wish it had been in the project, but we made some decisions early on, and this is the one thing that really does need to come back.
Especially the age group it affects, and if you've noticed, the increase of Central is significant, and the U would create some decisions that classes would make to not even go to an activity or whatever, where with that hallway, it makes access much more available, so. And it was in the original drawing, which tells me the architect thought it was needed at the beginning to begin with, and sorry that it got taken out, but it was explained.
Where's the storm-protected area, is that hallway going to make it quicker for people to get to those areas?
Actually, there's storm-protected areas on both sides of the building, so we're going to be able to get to the storm-protected areas. This is basically going to allow the passage from one side to the other, in inclement weather, cold weather, windy weather, all that kind of thing, without having to go outside, or through the rest of the building, and potentially disrupting other classes. And I should be able to point out exactly the storm-protected areas, but there's storm-protected areas on both sides of the building, so we're going to be in good shape on that.
They're kindergartners, we're going to, we're going to cover the walkway. How would you like to look at a kindergartner that got wet, because you didn't do that? I would make a motion that we approve the project.
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Jeff, and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bill.
And again, I apologize, that's one I never should have taken out, but we were determined we were going to do everything on budget, and it just, most things came up. The next item before you this evening is basically Dodge City High School. This is basically two things, we're pulling some money out of owner's reserve, we're also transferring some money from the architect to the general project, as we've done in some other things. The one thing that I would kind of lift up in this, that we're really pretty excited about is, we are going to, you'll see the ADA and bus parking on the Northwest Drive. As you come to the backside of the building, we're going to widen the street there, put bus parking on both sides. We think that's going to be a very safe place to load our athletes. Also, as we're using the practice field more and more for visiting teams, which, oh, that's not our game field, we have had some soccer games and other things there, and JV games, that's a place that they can pull their buses and get their kids out, right to the facility without crossing the street at all. So we think that's pretty exciting. The second thing is, I think, as we talked about, and if you've been by the facility, since the beam signing, it is a big facility. We are basically putting netting inside that facility. The reason is, a lot of folks don't do that, and a couple of years, they're inside of their facility, really looks like it's been there fifteen or twenty years. This is going to keep any tennis balls, baseballs, soccer balls, anything, kind of against the wall, it's going to protect it. We're planning to have a nice-looking facility for the next fifteen or twenty years, and that's really what we're doing. We think that's a good decision to be made, and we have the resources to do that. So, anyway, if there's any particular question, please raise that, and we'll move on.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Tracy, and a second by Brian, all in favor? Six-zero.
The next item is Dodge City Middle School. You all ready for a little comic relief this evening, we've got a long meeting? There is a certain board member, I won't mention any names, who from time to time called me about the parking lot behind Dodge City Middle School, and say, are you issuing fishing licenses for the pond in the back of Dodge City Middle School in the parking lot?
That was due to pressure at home, I might add.
I didn't mention any names. With this project, we determined obviously that the back of that parking lot was part of the parking lot that was going to be replaced, and of course, part of that's going to be over where the tennis court was. When we originally looked at the project, again, trying not to, you know, keep the cost in line and so forth, there was some areas next to the two-story wing that we thought we could probably save. As the project is processed, and the more we looked at that, we said, we can save it, but we're going to be back there very soon replacing it, it's just not a good situation, it's cheaper to do it while we're there. I may add, because of the history of that particular parking lot, and the bus traffic it's going to have, we're going to put an eight-inch concrete parking lot back there, we're putting the special fabric underneath the parking lot, because that will add longevity to the parking lot, we're really trying to do something that's going to be in this district a long time and a good job. Basically, the additional cost of that parking lot revision was a significant amount, part of it, we're pulling out a capital outlay previously approved, and part of it, we're kind of pulling out of this year's capital outlay, which we do have. So when we walk away from the project, you're not going to be ashamed at all if what's behind the, you know, Dodge City Middle School, it's going to be up to snuff, and it's going to last a long, long time. So that's the main thing on this. The only other thing I might mention, there is, if you're aware of the two-story addition at the middle school, or it really was an addition, it was part of the original school, the ceiling height is very low, that's a challenge that we faced, as we've redone that previously. We're adding maker spaces at the end, and the maker spaces, really, there are some things they do, they need a little more height on, and we're going to have a ramp going down to the lower middle school, and a ramp going up. Well, we finally started looking at that, we determined we could add some additional space to the upper-level maker space, so if Mike King, in his infinite wisdom, says there are some projects that his kids need to do, he's going to send them upstairs to that maker space, and it's going to be a little higher ceiling, without more ramp going into it. And we're pretty excited about that. It's a little cost, but again, when you look at something over the life of that building, we're trying to do the very best we can, and make sure that the design's fulfilled. That's the two major things on that. Again, I might mention one other thing, in addition to capital outlay previously approved, and new capital outlay, which we do have, and it's not a problem there. We are, did throughout the project, earned interest on our bonds, we have earned a significant amount. We kind of put that in reserve because we weren't sure, again, we started off the project, and we immediately had a steel spike, and we wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be any question, we got down to the end, if I had to cut everything out, we feel comfortable at this point, that's not going to be the case, so we are going to use some of our bond interest money, which is really just part of the project money. So that's kind of the whole thing on Dodge City Middle School. Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion by Tammy, and a second by Barbara, all in favor? Six-zero.
Thank you so much. The next item, I'm going to sit down, I have two staff members here this evening, one of the softwares that we, the board approved was SchoolDude, and we thought it'd be helpful to show the board maybe a little about what SchoolDude does. We use it with the regularity in our district, in fact, every day. We're pretty excited about, we started with Chris Meyer, and we did maintenance orders and so forth, but we're starting with Karen this evening. Since we took over the Civic Center, we have used SchoolDude to schedule the Civic Center, and to do all the other, I'll just let you talk about what we do at SchoolDude.
Okay. Basically, I use this program to schedule events at the Civic Center. This page here kind of gives you an idea of how busy the Civic Center stays. Right now, we have twenty-six events scheduled for the month of September, and then you can kind of see down. I can also see how many that I've invoiced, if I have any that are outstanding. So I usually pull that up, and then I can see, do I have any that are past due, that I need to send out reminders on, that are outstanding, that I need to send reminders on. So that's kind of that page there. We got the calendar view, and this will kind of show, we can look at our months, what we have scheduled, and you can kind of see, we have several things for September. This also includes our high school basketball practice, cheer practice, and then community events as well. But if I needed to, after I schedule an event, I can do an invoice. This is kind of what a schedule will look like. We just put in all the information, gives the times, set up that kind of stuff, and then I can invoice them, and this is kind of what the invoice looks like. So it makes it really easy, we don't have to create another document, we can just use it all, straight from the program. Let's see if I can get back over here. Let's see, on the scheduling, again, we have different options when we schedule. If we have just a normal schedule, we can schedule there. If we have reoccurring or irregular schedules, these are, irregular schedules are like the ones that may be different days, different times, they're not all the same, and we can kind of do it there. Don't have a lot of those, thank goodness. But when we schedule it, after I put in, I just wanted to show kind of a main feature on this, after I put everything in, like the person, the event dates, times, setup time, this is their contact information address, down at the bottom, we can put in needs for the event, so like custodial needs would be just as needed, so we could check that and then put there, as needed. And then down here, like number of people attending, other needs, if they have, you know, maybe they want ten tables set up in the room instead of eight, we can put that information in there. And then I can, when I submit it, I can select it to route to Monique in Maintenance, and then she gets an email... and then she gets an email notification that an event has been scheduled there. And then it kind of has the information for maintenance, so they can go in and set up that room as they need to. And then I would just activate the schedule, and then from there, I would create the invoice. So it's really a good little program. It makes my job easy. I like it. Like I said, once I create the schedule, I can just go straight and do the invoice, and I don't have to create separate documents there. It also has a place in here, we're under documents. This is where we keep our standard rental agreement. So when a person comes in, then I just click on that, and then that, I just fill in like our rental information. We print that out, we go over everything with them, and then have them sign it. So that is mainly what I use School Dude for. And just a little side note here, from this page, I can also run reports of our events. So just out of curiosity, I ran a report earlier today to see exactly how many baby showers we have done at the civic center since February of 2013, because it seems like that is our main event. Turns out, we've done 187 baby showers since we've had the facility. In addition to baby showers, we've done 1,355 events. That includes all of our school events, basketball practice, cheer practice, the shrine circus, community concerts. So it stays very, very busy. So, and this program makes my job easy in scheduling. So that's all I got, if anybody has questions. Okay, I will turn it over to maintenance.
Bill say the word dude.
For me, I can, since I'm the administrator, I can go to all of my programs that School Dude offers. There's a lot more that they offer than we use, but our main software that we use is Maintenance Direct. And with this, we have all of our maintenance and custodial staff and all of our buildings hooked up to it. So once they submit a work order, then it automatically comes to us as a new work order, new request. And then we'll assign it to one of our employees. And then the good thing about it is, is they can't lose their work orders. So for right now, we have 415 work orders that are new requests, 167 that are in progress. And we've, since we've started the program, we have 34,033 work orders that we've completed. It's a really-
What kind of timeframe is that?
Huh?
Like what kind of timeframe?
You know, I meant to grab that. It's been 10, 11 years since we've started this program. I meant to grab that, and I just run out of time today, so. It's a really powerful program. Like if somebody wants to come up and, you know, like, if we work on a toaster, you know, you know, I can pull it up and, you know, we didn't work on a toaster, so I guess. The search engines are just enormous. I can run reports on hours, transactions, work orders by school. The one thing that's really good is it's interactive with the school district, or the schools. So when they have work orders and they want to know a question about it, then they can go to their work order list and pull it up. Like if we have an emergency, you click on the emergency button, and it brings up all of the emergencies that we have right now. So... Like here's some of my work orders that, I've got some really old, old work orders, so don't look at that. But we can't, we don't lose the work orders, that's the good thing about it. The guys can, they get a work order, they can fill out the action, they can save it, and then we can complete it. It's on their iPads, their phones, their computers. It's, it's a really neat program. I apologize, I don't use this as much as I used to, but it, when I did work with it every day, it's, it was real easy to manipulate and just go through it, so. Do you have any questions or want to say anything?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Madam President, there was one more item that we didn't get recorded, that I didn't get added to the agenda that we talked about today, and that was Bill talking about the administrative office.
Oh, yes, yes.
Have him talk about that right now.
If I may, and I appreciate this opportunity. We have been trying to kind of schedule it. I know the board has expressed continued interest in basically leaving this building and providing another administrative center within the district. We started talking about this last week. Maybe it would be ideal if we could kind of finish up some projects and start into that, and we were thinking maybe next summer would be the ideal time to do that. I talked to Tom Montgomery, and Tom said, "Given that we have a number of contractors in town, we might have a situation where there, we should try to work maybe before they leave to get another bid out and get something moving on this." Candidly, I woke up about four o'clock in the morning on Saturday, and I thought, "Well," I started looking at the schedule, "We're really gonna start cleaning out some of our current projects this spring early." So I called Ryan Rowley, and Ryan Rowley at Hudson Construction really said, "If we could possibly get the administration building underway and bid the first quarter of next year, he thinks that would be the best time for pricing." In other words, we'd get the best value for our money. I talked to Tom again about that, and Tom is with the hurricane. He's especially concerned about material costs, and he said about the second quarter is when he's expecting that to really come in. So I felt like I owed it to the board to kind of come and talk to you just a little bit, that our current contractor in town and our architect both are saying, "If we want to get the best value and the best pricing on an administration building, we may want to move that up to first quarter."
Bill, why, why would they say that the building prices wouldn't spike until the second quarter?
What Tom says, and again, this is speculation. I mean, I'm, I'm just-
Yeah, I would think they would spike in the next 60 days.
Well, what they're saying is, by the time that they get people in, get things designed, get things underway, that the steel and a lot of the issues is gonna be really second quarter before you really see, you know, you're gonna see a lot of emergency kind of, we're gonna board up windows and stuff like that. But that's what they say, that's what he's really expecting to see the indication on that. Is that right or wrong? I don't know. Ryan's view is that we have a number of contractors in town. They know what it costs to do here. I think generally, our subcontractors are happy working with the district. They're happy working with our contractor. They feel comfortable in Dodge City. And yes, they could go chase a storm in Texas or Florida, but that's kind of the unknown. What are you gonna run into? What's it gonna cost? There's just a lot of unknowns there, and the sense was that we might be better off. So having said that, I guess the question is, is the board in a position where you would like to at least put some finality on your plans for an administration building? Do we need to bring Tom in and kind of go one more time through this? And we say, "Here's where the building's gonna be, here's what we want you to design, and we get moving on this." That is really, that's the first question. I'm gonna make one recommendation. I've heard loud and clear from this board, you do not want a tax increase. And I think if you do anything at all tonight, you might pass something that says, "We will not increase taxes to build a new administration building." I think there's some ways we can accomplish that without a tax increase, but that needs to be part of the going forth. So you really need to hire the architect, make a decision. I think you need to direct administration to come up with some financing options without a tax increase. I've said that twice. How many times do I have to say that, Jeff, before people hear that?
Just keep saying it.
Keep saying, okay. No tax increase.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to be cute in that. I mean, I just think that's really important. We know we have the need, and the question is, if we can get this underway and get a design knocked out, you know, development, design, get some decisions made, we might really be able to start bid this project, maybe middle of February next year, maybe beat some of the cost increases that they're predicting from the hurricane. And my goal is that a year from this Christmas, we're moving into an administration building. That's kind of what I see as a possibility. I work at the board's pleasure. If you never want me to hear, talk about this again, I will go away. But if you, if you're interested in doing it, if you direct us to, we will bring those people necessary and the plans necessary. I asked Dr. Dirksen this afternoon, I said, "Are you happy with the delivery method we've had on the bond issue?" Because one of the discussions the board needs to decide is, do you want a construction manager at risk again? Or do you want us to put it out, you know, for bids and more the traditional model? From administration, I think we've been very happy with the construction manager at risk. I don't know that really any member of the board has expressed one way or the other, but you as a board need to make a decision, because there's a process we have to go through if we're gonna do that.
Well, I think, number one, you're correct that the board, I believe, is still in favor of, I mean, this building's not getting any better. We, we're just avoiding the inevitable by not moving forward. It's my opinion that we need to move and do this.
I agree. Sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, the no tax increase, and it doesn't affect student learning. So whatever money we get, it can't affect the classroom.
Right.
But I would like to see your financing, your financing options. And how we want to finance it.
We can, we can make that happen? Would it be appropriate that, and again, I'm, I work at the pleasure of the board, but if you'd like to, at the next board meeting, we could bring forth, you know, some basically, you know, here's what we see or we've heard that you want to include. I could bring some preliminary financing numbers back. We could also bring a proposal. Are you happy with the construction manager at risk as a delivery method? I mean, is that-
I think it's worked well for us.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I-
Oh, I, I agree.
And we can bring those things to the next board meeting, and we will plan on moving forward from that point on then, if that's, if that's the will of the board, again. Okay.
Sounds good.
Yes. Anything I missed on that, or?
Nope, I think that's it.
Thanks, Bill. Dr. Dirksen?
Thank you. I'll pull up my PowerPoint. I just have a short PowerPoint that I wanted to deliver tonight. In my consideration sheet, I did give credit to the appropriate people. First of all, I really grabbed on to the theme that Ms. Spiced and Jay Gifford have gone with this year, who we are. I also appreciated greatly the last board meeting and Martha Mendoza's presentation really touched me, so I borrowed her idea. And I put it in the format of the district. I also owe credit to Ray Whiff, who helps everybody in. I appreciated his help on this as well.
Where would we be without Ray?
I just want you to get a picture of the district, and we're using numbers from last year. I don't expect a serious change in that. 7,252 students are the percentage you see. The chart on the right represents the state. The district is on the left. Interesting, a few more males in our school, but very close to the state average in gender. Next slide, disabilities, also interesting. State results show a larger percentage of students at schools than we have in 443 that are qualified with disabilities, larger. And I think that's interesting. Next slide. Our migrant numbers show an increase. The state average is less than 2%, and we show more than 16%. And our migrant numbers, last year, the count was 1,170 students. Turning that percentage into real lives, 1,170. Next slide, ELL. Look at the comparison between the state and 443. We have almost six times what the state average has in ELL students. That's significant. And then the next slide shows our economically disadvantaged. Our economically disadvantages, I think I've been told, the second highest in the state, I believe is accurate.
We go between second highest and highest, just depends on the year.
Every, every year. And we're at 82% of that. And then the final one is our race and ethnicity. And three-fourths, more than three-fourths of our students are Hispanic. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of question with everything that's going on nationally and everything that's going on even in our state. But I want you to know, as your superintendent, that I knew who we were when I applied for the job and was excited about who we are when I received the job. And I think it's important, as a district, that we embrace who we are. I think it's important, as an administration, that they hear the leadership say that we know who we are, we care about who we are, and we're gonna do the best we can with who we have. And I want the board to absorb this. I want the board to embrace these numbers, and I want us to be proud of who we are. And I think there are gonna be some numbers that I'm going to share with you throughout the year and as we go along. And we're not gonna be proud of every number that I show you, but we're gonna do the best we can to improve those numbers. And, and I think that's what it's all about. And I think, I know that we have excited administrators, we have excited teachers. I just think it's important that we start from this point and move forward from this day on. And I'm, I'm not saying that there was anything wrong with where we've been before, but I just, I just want to have a very clear picture of who we are. And I just combined this year's theme with this year's first presentation that really impressed me, and, and I'm excited about it. And last thing I have to say about this item, we are not the cookie cutter education that is being displayed from Topeka. We are representative of, what I believe is more representative of the United States and the diversity that exists in America than 99% of the school districts in Kansas. And, and that's something to be proud of as well and to recognize, that we're really an international school in many ways, and much more representative than a lot of schools that are around us. And that makes us a leader. We have a responsibility with that, and this is who we are.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right. Getting you all motivated and fired up now, let's talk wellness. We are moving forward with the Wellness Committee. We have held a meeting, and it was brought to the attention of the committee by April Ball, who is taking over this position and doing a very nice job, that we need board representation.
I've been doing that with Shirley.
Okay.
For three or four years.
I'm asking you to continue to do that.
I would love to.
And we'll appoint that.
Yeah.
And, and I hope we can look at wellness holistically. There are several things that I've noticed. I'm not a big fan of the smoke shack out back of the high school where the construction workers are smoking, but I looked in the policy, and it's within board policy to, for them to have that. But I'd like to be a smoke-free campus and do that, at least in a passive-aggressive way, that we at least support that eventually, but we'll talk about that along the way. Those are some things I see, but I want us to promote wellness to the best of our abilities and don't want anybody feeling shy about reaching for that next chocolate in that bowl that's tempting you right now at the table as well. I'm not anything more than that.
I think I agree with you. I mean, with our tobacco initiative that we've started and try and grow there.
Absolutely.
We need to lead by example. Definitely. Good point.
The, yeah, I totally agree with that. And, and we're in the business of education, and we need to educate. And Dr. Fortmeyer presented the junior ROTCs and the wellness initiatives that, you know, we want it to intertwine with all of our curriculum across the board. Okay, the next item was-
Do we need to move on?
Oh, yes, let's do a point, Tammy, as a member, and make note of that, okay?
I would make a motion that Tammy serve on the Wellness Committee.
Start it. Motion by Jeff, second by Tracy. All in favor? Six zero.
John Montford approached me about his desire or interest in a doctorate program. I shared with him information that I know from my experiences with Wichita State. I think he is a student of Wichita State to begin with. And I think he has definite interest in this program. As a graduate of the doctorate program from WSU, I can't be anything but a supporter of this program, because it was provided for me as well. It's an unbelievable experience. experience. It's something that I hope to share with other administrators eventually, and we'll have to figure out a balance for that. But we are a large district, and it's been successful for many districts. I happen to be part of Cohort Nine all the way back in 2000, is when I started, in 2000. So there's been six, 17, 18 more cohorts now and counting. And when I started, they only took six, and they're doing a larger number now. And, and these are students from all across the state, actually from overseas even. And it does require a commitment, but the payoff is very interesting. The payoff usually comes in the form of, if a board will make a commitment to allow one or more of their administrators to take part in the program, they will give them a study because the way the program is devised is that the cohort performs an actual study for the districts that are represented so that when they go out on their own and write their dissertation, they have the same experience of performing a study. I mean, that's essentially what you do. And the WSU program makes you complete that dissertation, not just start it. I want to point that out for some of the other doctorate programs. We're proud of that. In shocker land. And it's, it's a very learning experience. And you're, tonight, I'm just providing this information that John provided me and asking you to support it. Wanted to know if you had any questions about it. I'm trying to give you the information that I know and keep it brief at the same time, so.
I assume that we'll have something in place so that if there were a need at Sunnyside for principal while he's out, that there'd be someone that would cover that, or?
And I did speak to him about that, and he currently does have a lead teacher in place that would act in your absence when you're gone.
We currently have two Distella candidates, two Distella students right now, who will have their master's in leadership this May. And there's also, of course, a counselor who's by design me in times of my absence.
And I, I supported the principal back at the district I was at, and he did the same thing and went through the program. And the thing that I said to that board, they're still the principal even when they're gone, and when they get back, that work has to be done. And for them to be an effective principal, they've got to finish all of that work. And if they have someone in place that can at least keep things going that day, they still have to finish the paperwork and do the, the tough jobs and get it done. So, yeah, that would be true. And what I thought would be appropriate is kind of like a first reading. I didn't want to throw that at you and think you had to approve it tonight. I want you to think about it. If you have any questions, just don't be afraid to email John or I, and I want you to feel comfortable about it. It is a quality program. It is very worthwhile. It's professional development at a high level, so.
Good luck, John.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Then the next item, oh, yeah. The approval of the extension for the retirement was presented to me, and I just think it's the right thing to do for someone that's served our district for that length of time. And it is a policy that allows for your approval of that. Just think it takes formal action.
I agree.
I make a motion for approval.
Second?
Motion by Tammy and a second by Barbara. All in favor? Six zero.
Okay, that's my report.
Thank you. All right. Board of Education member district responsibilities. Barbara, you have a Park and Rec report?
Well, really not. I mean, I've already given it. We had our meeting on August the 8th. Then we had the board meeting on August the 14th, and on that date, I did the report. Now we have a meeting tomorrow, so I'll give you that report in due course.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, Bright Beginnings Head Start?
Well, WY saved me and sent me an email, what's going on, since I wasn't aware to. They have all of their early Head Start, or their Head Start positions filled, that's 215. The Early Learning Kansas slots, there's 149 of 157 student slots filled, with additional 22 students filling our community spots in the Early Learning Program. The Special Education Peer Buddies Program, Early Head Start is serving 61 children in their home visitation program and daycare. And they've already hosted their first preschool parent program last week. And they shared information about the program governance and how parents can get involved in policy council and parent committees. They, we have meetings scheduled for Tuesdays at 11:30 a.m., though I did receive an email where they referenced interest if there'd be more parents available if we made it to an evening meeting. I did not hear the results of that, but just whatever they can do to get more parents involved. If they're not available for the meetings, there's other opportunities as far as volunteering in classroom, which all of you are invited to do as well, for that in-kind match, every hour counts. Read your stuff slowly. And our Head Start monitoring programs, program reviews, which should start as early as November.
Okay, very good. Jeff?
Um.
Special Ed?
Yeah. The Special Ed Co-op has a hard time having board meetings because getting a quorum there. I am going to ask this board if, if I can speak for the board and challenge the rest of the schools. I, I, you know, you, you can go to them by phone, and I went to one by phone. You cannot concentrate. I mean, it's just almost impossible to go and participate in that, that meeting. I would like to take a message back to the 613 Board and tell the superintendent, I mean, I, you know, we are the largest contributor, we're the largest recipient of services. And I, I have some real issues, the way the board meetings are run, the information we get, and the participation in it. And I would like your permission to speak for you and say, we, and I don't even know how I'm going to phrase it, but we encourage vehemently that this board become a more functioning board and meet at a time where they can have people at the meetings and do the business of the co-op. Because it is, it is, I've been doing it now for six years, and, and just to be perfectly honest with you, I, I've had it. Because we put too much money as a district in that co-op, and we need, there needs to be some changes. And, and so that's, and I, I'm sorry, Dr. Dirksen, I haven't spoken to you about this. This began to work on me since about noon today.
We were.
And so I should have run this by you, and I apologize.
That's all right.
But I-
I just tried to recommend finding them, but now you're really making them get on the horse and make a commitment, so.
Well, I mean, because we, you just can't run an organization like that.
No.
And, and so I-
Well, how many meetings did it take to pass the budget?
Uh, two, two or three.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have a quorum.
Yeah.
And so there's some other issues that we're working on that really point up at this problem. And so that's my report, is that I think we have to demand more.
I think you're right.
As, as a district, because-
And it's not just from the co-op, it's from the membership of the co-op as well.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. And, and I'm not so much talking about your people in the classroom. I'm talking about how this, this district, this is a, we could not run this district like that's run. We could not do it.
Right.
And, and so that is, that's my report, and I would like your permission to sit down and share these, these things with the board, you know, the board and the staff of 613.
I'm in favor.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is that all you need?
That's, I'm done.
Okay. Dr. Dirksen, do you have anything legislative-wise that we need to be aware of?
Only information I have is what maybe Dale has shared with us, and that is that they don't feel the court is in any hurry to make a ruling because of the timing and the year is underway, and believes that it will be closer to the legislative session. I'll watch, it'll come out Friday now after I said this, but it is what we heard, so I'm only repeating what we were told. That'd be the case.
I think you have to say it three times, isn't that right, Bill?
At least three.
But legislatively, I think that that will guide the ship, and we're still waiting on the court ruling, so.
Okay. Nothing on Capitol Outlet or Calendar? Kansas Heritage Center Work Group, we're going to meet tomorrow, and wanting to have something to bring before the board by the October meeting to approve transitioning the Kansas Heritage Center from the district to the library. We're trying to work out exactly what that looks like and timeframe and, and all of that. Did I leave out any information? Questions?
Not that I know of. The, the library is working with the city and other entities on some commitments for their improvements, where they would like to house the Heritage Center. And this has been in the works for a long while, and, and they're to the point where they really want to know by October. So I think our timeline is good. And all indications are it was headed this way. I wasn't as up to date as I should have probably been at the first meeting that I ever went to, but I'm fine with that. And I believe we'll find a way to work with the Heritage Center, not only in educational displays, but in traveling exhibits and other items as well. And we'll always be a part in some form of the Heritage Center. And I think it's very unique to Dodge City, and want to see that happen. So I was unaware of the meeting tomorrow, and I had asked for vacation day tomorrow for my own wellness. It's called the Kansas State Fair. And I've taken that day, and then I found out there was a meeting there, so just want you to know that. And so Lisa said she would represent us as well, so.
Okay. We have Ryan scheduled to review district bills before the October board meeting. I'll make sure he's aware of that. Next, or, yeah, I guess next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday, September 20th is our official count day for State Department of Ed. Monday, September 25th is the noon luncheon meeting at Central. And then October 9th will be Board of Education meeting here in the Austin Boardroom at 6:00. Do we have any items for future board meetings or information?
I did want to comment on the calendar committee. I did have several references given to me in a negative fashion of five days to start the school year. And my comment to each and every one of them was that you voted for it. So I just think that's, I think that's interesting.
I think it's kind of poignant that on Patriots' Day, September 11th, we talk about junior ROTC, so-
Yeah.
It was kind of nice that conveniently happened.
Yeah, that is special. Very true. Yep. And I understand we do not have an executive session.
I don't believe we do.
Okay. Go Tammy.
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.